We have 4:35, which is the scheduled time for our first work session tonight. And Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole, Mr. Jones, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Lynn, Mr. Morrissey, Mr. Wilford, Mr. Hurd.
Here. Motion approved the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries. We are in session. We have the pleasure of being here this evening for our first council work session. Somebody that I've spent a lot of time in my office talking about different projects. Charles, why don't you come on up? Charles Pearson. The Pearson Consulting is going to talk to us about a proposal. And I'm not going to try to tell everybody what it is, Charles. That's why you're here.
Okay.
What's your proposal? Fill us in.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor. I think me and you have been talking about it a year now.
Yeah.
And that means everything to me. And so I appreciate you taking the time out. The second thing I'd like to do is thank Pat Morrissey for even putting me in this position. So I appreciate that. And another thank you to Quentin for putting me in key positions with people in the community. So I just wanted to make sure I take the time out on that. Today is a unique day because I've been doing a lot of civil rights projects throughout the state of Iowa. And one of the things that I started venturing into was how do we capture it? How do we interpret the stories? In Davenport, what we started doing, we looked at the rise of the abolitionist movement. So when it comes to Iowa's early civil rights history, we started focusing on that. And then we looked at the actual civil rights movement, where you had Charles, Tony, Bill Chris, some of these names I want to be familiar with. But the stories got so exciting that some of the neighborhood people wanted to get more involved. And so what that meant was, when it came to developing the neighborhoods' historical resources, we had to figure out a way to sit at the table with the city council, sit at the table with the neighborhood associations, and figure out how we could take these civil rights resources and develop them. I'm not going to get into what we actually accomplished there, but some of the things I learned there made me start thinking about Waterloo, Iowa. Waterloo, Iowa is my hometown. I graduated in '84. In '83, we won a state championship, the last wrestling state championship at East High School. I was on that team. And a lot of the places I remember training at, running at, getting my body ready for wrestling, could actually be a trail system now. I felt like when it came to like a neighborhood trail, if y'all know Charles Miles, I don't know how many of y'all know Charles Miles, that's my father. So as a young man, I had to be in Unity Neighborhood Association, learn a little bit about economic development, a little bit about neighborhood development. And as a grown man now, I have my own ideas off of my father. Currently, what you're looking at there is, I have the City of Waterloo Martin Luther King Jr. Nature Trail. What's unique is this nature trail could be the first Martin Luther King Nature Trail in the United States of America. If you go around the United States, you have Martin Luther King parks, parkways, a lot of streets. I even seen a Martin Luther King baseball stadium in Tampa, Florida. But in this situation, I think it was meant to be because historically, I don't know if any of you knew Martha Nash? Martha Nash was one of the people that wanted the Martin Luther King Drive. She saw on the national level that there was Martin Luther King Drives, so we ended up getting the Martin Luther King Drive. What's unique about this Martin Luther King Drive, it has a trail system that goes with it. So if you're familiar with trail systems, what that is, is one of those things where communities can get engaged now. We have an industrial area that can get engaged now. You already have agriculture out there. You have wetlands. A lot of people that I had a chance to talk to didn't know we had a federal wetlands on Martin Luther King Drive. A lot of people didn't know we had a man-made pond, a man-made pond, until Paul actually shared that with me a while ago. So you have these different amenities that could be a huge asset, not just for the people to ride the bikes, but for the community as a whole. I'll take it to the next one. So basically today, what I'm looking at doing is try to have requests to have a proclamation of naming the bike trail on Martin Luther King Drive. So we have a, we have a unique bike trail that is on Martin Luther King Drive, which is a street. But the goal is to see if we could turn it into a nature trail, because we have all the amenities to have a nature trail. And once again, like I said, it will be the first MLK Nature Trail in the United States of America. So I think that's something people could sit on. Okay. Some of the things I'm going to do is talk real briefly about the benefits of a Martin Luther King Nature Trail. So I got a list. You have health, you have transportation, livability, you have conservation and environment, you have economy and revitalization, you have historic preservation and community identity. Instead of me having all these words on the board, I'll just briefly write, discuss each one individually. So here I have benefits of Martin Luther King Nature Trail. The MLK Nature Trail is often seen narrowly when it comes to the overall benefits the trail has to offer. People tend to lose focus on the recreational or environmental aspects of MLK Nature Trail and are failing to see the big picture. The total package of benefits that MLK Nature Trail can provide to the Cedar Valley, including public health, economic and transportation benefits, and even the effect on community pride and identity. When seen as a whole, the evidence about the far-reaching benefits of Martin Luther King Jr. Nature Trail is compelling, especially given the minimal public investment involved compared to other undertakings with the same community goals. Going back to the first PowerPoint, health. The MLK Nature Trail creates healthy recreation and transportation opportunities by providing people of all ages with attractive, safe, accessible, and low or no-cost place to cycle, walk, hike, jog, or skate. Trails help people of all ages incorporate exercise into their daily routines by connecting them with places they want or need to go. Communities that encourage physical activity by making use of the linear corridors can see a significant effect on public health and wellness. Transportation and livability. In addition to providing a safe place for people to enjoy recreational activities, MLK Nature Trail can function as a viable transportation corridor. MLK Nature Trail can be a crucial element to a seamless urban or regional multimodular transportation system. If the City of Waterloo incorporates the MLK Nature Trail and a Martin Luther King Interpretive Center into their, into their transit plans, and relying upon the Interpretive Center to feed people into and out of transit is a safe and efficient manner. The ability to avoid congested streets and highways and travel through natural areas on foot or by non-motorized means is a larger factor in a community's livability. Now we're going to conservation environment. The Martin Luther King Nature Trail has all the traditional conservation benefits of preserving green space, but also has additional benefits by having a man-made pond and a federally protected wetlands. As tools for ecology and conservation, MLK Nature Trail helps preserve important natural landscapes, provide needed links between fragmented habitats, and offer tremendous opportunities for protecting plant and animal species. The MLK Nature Trail also can be a useful tool for wetland preservation and the improvement of air and water quality. In addition, MLK Nature Trail can allow humans to experience nature with minimal environmental impact. Economy and revitalization. The economic effect of MLK Nature Trail is sometimes readily apparent. When a company decides to move to a particular community because of amenities like the MLK Nature Trail, there is no question, however, that countless communities across America have experienced an economic revitalization due in whole or part to their trails. Historic preservation and community identity. Many community leaders have been surprised at how MLK Drive has become a source of community identity and pride. These effects are magnified when communities use MLK Nature Trail to highlight and provide access to historic and cultural resources. MLK Nature Trail is in a great position to assist in preserving historically significant transportation corridors and neighborhoods. So today, basically, is just trying to sell to the city the idea that we had, we're in a very unique situation to take a bicycle trail and make it a model for other communities. I think the other piece that we have to understand is that if you know the history of Martin Luther King, or somebody told you the history of Martin Luther King, Martin Luther King actually marched from Lincoln Park to Washington Park. So if you actually wanted to come to Waterloo and experience the footsteps of Martin Luther King, you could actually just take Lincoln Park to Washington Park. I think the key piece right now is, is that the city buys into the nature trail concept. There's a lot of different opportunities to do like nature studies, there's opportunities to do ecology, there's opportunities to sit with the industrial side of it, because, because the trail system is right by the industrial park, it could be appealing for future developers that might want to come into Industrial Park. I think another key piece is, is that this nature trail could be part of the American Discovery Trail. So if y'all know where the American Discovery Trail is at, that trail is between Highway 63 and East Fourth Street. And the other part is our River Loop. I think the trail could be an asset to developing our River Loop. I think we need more bicyclists to be a hub in Waterloo and not let them all be a hub in Cedar Falls. Cedar Falls is doing a good job with their trail system, but I think the Cedar Valley Trail Partnership isn't effective for the City of Waterloo when it comes to developing our neighborhood trails. The other piece is, is that if you understand rail history, the history of the railroad, a lot of the trails are built around the railroad. So Waterloo, I want to say this side of town has two, two or 300 rail lines in neighborhoods and throughout the city, but none of them are being used as a source for trail development. I noticed that on the west side, I want to say maybe Surgeon Road, I want to say Highway 63 Trail. There's been a lot of attention on the west side when it comes to trail development, but over here it's kind of been ignored. And so the thing is, this is a great opportunity for the City of Waterloo to sit at the table with a lot of people, a variety of people. You could look at arts and culture, you could look at the Department of Transportation, you could look at education, historical preservation. All these things can benefit from the Martin Luther King Nature Trail. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Pearson?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that I wondered, as you're talking, is I know you're describing this, are you envisioning that the MLK Nature Trail would then come down into Waterloo? And I know that you're probably aware of the Complete Streets Committee and that Park Avenue was and is on target at some point in time, and I hope soon, to be a complete street from Franklin Street all the way over to South Street, which would be the path that you addressed as far as, are you envisioning it being more than just?
Absolutely. I'm going to tell you what my vision is. And I'm looking at your lens because you're absolutely right. If I look out of your lens, I'm looking at Martin Luther King Nature Trail definitely being connected to the bicycle shop, Craig's Bicycle Shop, because when you look, when you look at retail businesses, a lot of retail depend on trail systems now to have people stop and spend money. And so the problem I noticed in downtown Waterloo, you don't have enough retail development to have people actually buy in to bring, to ride downtown Waterloo. So going back to your question, what the goal is, if we could take the current nature trail that stops on Vine Street and connect it to Lincoln Park, now we're talking, because that's where Martin Luther King started his march back in 1959. So in 1959, when King first emerged in the state of Iowa, the very first march he ever had in our state was from Lincoln Park to Washington Park. And so, yeah, you're absolutely right. That makes all the sense in the world. Now, if you look at it out of my lens, my lens is saying, I want to see the nature trail be connected to the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, because Martin Luther King had seven visits in the state of Iowa's history. His first visit was Waterloo, his second visit was Cedar Falls, his third visit was Iowa City, his fourth visit was Des Moines, no, his fourth visit was Mount Vernon, his fifth visit was Des Moines, and his last visit was Davenport. But what's unique is you have trail systems set up by the American Discovery Trail and the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. So I talked to the DOT, I said, how, how would that look if we actually tried to capture all the places MLK visited off of I-380? They said we had to look at the trails. So, so the Cedar Valley Nature Trail covers four of those places. So if you look at that, you're talking about Waterloo, Cedar Falls, Mount Vernon, Cedar Rapids are all on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. When it comes to the other three places, you're talking about Des Moines, Iowa City, and Davenport. That comes off of I-80. The goal we're, what we're looking at, we're saying, okay, how can we make Iowa City a connector to both places that King visited, and then the last place he visited, Davenport, make that the hub too? Because, because Davenport is the last place Martin Luther King visited. Matter of fact, this is the 50th anniversary of King's last visit to Iowa. But what's the difference between Waterloo and Davenport? We have the Mississippi River Trail, we have the Mississippi River Trail and the Discovery Trail that connects. And with Davenport being the last place that King visited, the nature trail makes that much more sense to make it a state project rather than just the Waterloo project. But what makes even more sense is that the city takes the lead, and so when we go around, we say, look, this is like the Martin, the first Martin Luther King Nature Trail is in Waterloo, and we the first ones to be able to have something like that.
Just real, real quickly, just two quick things, and then a last question about where we go from here. But for those on council that did not have an opportunity to hear your presentation at the Waterloo Library and some of the other places you've done around the community, can you give about a two-minute synopsis of all the different, you know, from German to Irish, all the folks that are actually tied together? Because this is, yeah, of course, MLK was an African-American, but you're talking about the culture and history of many different diverse, diverse communities. And then also, real quickly, the designation, what a designation would do? Does it help with community rebuilding? Does it help with tourism? Does it have an economic positive impact for our community as well? So different cultures and races involved, and then the impact that it would have if we had this designation?
Yeah, you hit on the nail. What you, what people have to understand, civil rights has new faces now. When you look at Waterloo's early history, for some reason, the history writers, when it comes to East Waterloo, they locked in just on the black land. So if you want to talk about African-Americans in the civil rights movement, you could talk about the history of the lumberyard, you could talk about the history of a couple other riots, that type of thing. But what, if you look at, if you have a historical preservation commission, and you did the same thing, they're going to say, well, what was the first civil rights situation in the City of Waterloo? It was the Irish. If you know the, the history of the Illinois Central Railroad, the Irish felt like they were getting robbed because they wanted a raise from working on the Illinois Central Railroad, and the railroad said, no, we're not giving you no raise. So the Irish, if you look at the significance, the very first civil rights issue in this city was built around Irish immigrants. And so the whole thing is, from that, now you can feed into why blacks or Hispanics and all this other stuff. But if you refuse to tell the story of the Irish significance in the civil rights movement of Waterloo, Iowa, that's tragic. The other piece is that you're looking at, when it comes to that whole concept of the cultures, okay, when it comes to that whole...
Back there, Charles. Okay. Don't, just keep talking.
Okay. So when it comes to diversity, something tragic that we found out was Highway 63. You guys weren't around at the time, but you had this huge milton pot of European culture that lived off of Highway 63. There was a point in our history that the city had the choice of preserving some of those European significance or knocking it down and building a highway. Well, guess what our old council did? They destroyed the history of Croatians, Italians, Jews, Germans. You had this big milton pot of neighborhood people, and not you guys, but people before you, didn't use preservation as a tool, they let it just do what it do. So when it comes to economic impact, what we're looking at is a hub. I think the city built the River Loop to have people come down to the River Loop and go to the market, or stop and have a cocktail, or have a sandwich, or something like that. What, what I'm going to do is I'm going to let you look out of my lens. If you look at the Cedar Valley Trail Partnership, everybody's familiar with the Cedar Valley Trail Partnership. There's two things about the Trail Partnership. One of them, they do maintenance of trail systems. So when it comes to Waterloo, Iowa, they make sure that our signs are okay, they make sure everything is up to par. But we have 33 neighborhoods in Waterloo, Iowa. And the Cedar Valley, the Cedar Valley Trail Partnership hasn't assisted in developing not one of our nature trails. Not one of our, now one of our neighborhoods, out of 33 neighborhoods, not one of them has got any assistance from the Cedar Valley Trail Partnership. But if you look at Cedar Falls neighborhoods, every last one of their neighborhoods has its bicycle trail. And so, so it's just some things to consider.
Charles, I'm going to unfortunately have to cut you off.
Yes, sir.
Another meeting before we start our meeting. So as I always end our conversation with you, I just need you to keep me up to speed and tell me what you need from the city.
What I need from the city is you guys to name it the Martin Luther King Nature Trail.
The existing, when you're talking.
Right.
The existing bike trail. I will look into that immediately.
Yeah. If we can do that, that is, that's, that's going to take the...
I'll, I will look into that immediately.
And 10 seconds. You've also had conversations with Interco, too, and tying in some of this stuff together.
Matter of fact, me, Kyle, and Cody just talked just a second ago, and some of the things they said to me make sense. We on the right track. Everybody's on the right track. The problem is we just need more time with the trail. It's going to take, for us to get grants and approvals, that type of thing, it's going to take a little time. But Interco is very familiar with what we want. Very good. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
I just had, what do you expect from the council?
The only thing I expect from the council is to name the trail Martin Luther King Nature Trail.
Oh.
That's it.
There you go. And Charles and I have frequent contact, so just keep me up to speed.
Yes, sir.
Charles, and we'll, I will look in on this immediately to see what it takes to get done.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Move to adjourn.
So, I don't think, do we have to adjourn?
We're going into another ordinance committee.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Ordnance Committee, could we, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll? Here.
Ms. Cole? Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Wilford?
Here.
Motion approved the agenda, it's proposed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, we are ready. Eric, we're ready for you.
Eric Schrader, City Planner. We've been meeting an ordinance committee reviewing multiple amendments to various codes, and there was one that we did not get through, so this is word for the last one, and that is proposed changes to Chapter Two, Main Street Waterloo Redevelopment Authority of Title II Boards and Commissions. So the proposed change throughout Chapter Two, there are references to the area that is covered by those regulations referred to as the Central Business District, which the Central Business District is then defined as the S-Mid, S-S-M-I-D, which stands for Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District, which was previously in existence, but it's not currently effective. To avoid confusion over what area Main Street has authority over, including design review authority, the proposed amendment will remove all reference to S-Mid and will add a definition of the Central Business District that identically matches the legal description of the previously adopted S-Mid, the boundaries of which are all properties lying within the area bounded on the northeast by Franklin Street, on the southeast by the Union Pacific Railroad line between Sixth and Seventh Streets, on the southwest by Washington Street, which was formerly Glove Street, and on the northwest by Third Street and its extension to the Cedar River, except the two-block area bounded by Washington Street, West Fifth Street, Jefferson Street, and West Seventh Street, which is not included in the Central Business District. That's the main amendment. The City Attorney's Office also, in looking at that amendment, reviewed the entire section on Main Street and thought it would be best if several other cleanups to the ordinance were done, which includes Section 2-2-2, Composition and Membership. This would be a new paragraph being added to delineate the difference between the Cedar Skyline Corporation and the Commission authorized by this chapter. And in Section 2-2-3, Powers and Duties, wording is added to provide a process whereby a request that has been approved by the Commission can, by request of the mayor or three members of the council, request that the approval be brought before the council for review at their next meeting, and provides that the council may override the approval of the Commission by a two-thirds vote of all members of the council. The regulations already provide that a request that has been denied by the Main Street Commission to be reviewed by the council by similar means. So this just adds a provision where you can review something that has been approved by them as well.
So Eric.
Eric? Yes.
Give me an example.
So if there is a request for a design review to add a sign to a building that is denied by the Main Street Board, you already have the power to review and overturn that decision. This would give you the power, if they approved something, to also over, review it and override their action.
Eric, could you take a minute? Because I thought I understood it, but the relationship, the Cedar, Cedar Skyline Board and the Main Street Commission.
And it is kind of complicated, and I may not be the best person to try and explain that either, because it is kind of a complicated relationship. And part of that complicatedness is why the City Attorney's Office was suggesting a few of these changes to try and help address that, or at least, you know, have moving forward make it a little bit more clear. But as I understand it, going back before the creation of this chapter, there were several different arms of what is now under the umbrella of Main Street, which included Cedar Skyline Corporation, the Up-Downtowners, and I think one other entity that's essentially what is now Main Street. Now, they all kind of merged, the design review element fell under this Commission that was created by the City of Waterloo through enactment of this chapter, which delegated design review of the Main Street area to this Main Street Commission, and also then put them to task for other redevelopment efforts of the Main Street Downtown area. So that's kind of the overview as best I can describe it, if that helps a little bit.
Eric, Eric, so who is on Cedar Skyline Corporation? Who makes that up?
It's like a...
Is it the same people that are in Main Street?
Yes. The Cedar Skyline Corporation is the legal entity name, and it is, they, that entity is DBA, or Doing Business As Main Street Waterloo. It's like a 20-some member board.
So they're able to conduct business in regards to properties and purchasing properties as opposed to Main Street as...
So that's, there was a little gray area, I think, where it wasn't really left really clear between the entity that, you know, pre-existed Cedar Skyline Corporation, which already owned, you know, some property, well, and it might have been one of their predecessors, Up-Downtowners or one of those, I'm not that familiar with it. But when it kind of got merged into, you know, the one entity doing business as Main Street Waterloo, I think a little bit of that, who's doing what and who has, you know, control on it was probably not really delineated as well as it could have been.
So Eric, when, who decided on the boundaries?
That was in place long before I was here. Noel may have some knowledge on that. I mean, it was, I, it was the boundaries that they established for the Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District. I assume those boundaries were set based on, essentially what a self-supported municipal district is, is an area that agrees to tax themselves, so that increased tax goes into a fund to make improvements to that area that's self-taxing itself. I, it's my understanding, and I assume, that the boundaries were created based on where they thought they could get it passed. There's very detailed state code provisions on the establishment of a S-Mid, including both approval of the property owners, there's a certain level of support, petition of support that has to be submitted, certain level of opposition to it can automatically kill it. Once you get to that petition of support, it then has to also be approved by the council. It looks... It looks at percent area ownership and valuation are both calculated into that. So it's, it's very complicated, and there hasn't been a, a S-Mid for several years now, but we still have a, a Main Street that's based on a design review boundary that's off of what the former S-Mid was, so.
So no, there have been no additional businesses downtown in inner Waterloo that have wanted to become part of this?
There is no S-Mid now.
That, that wanted to be, that would want to be part of the Central Business District?
Yeah, your question is.
That's being established here.
Your question is not necessarily S-Mid. You're asking how the boundaries were developed.
Correct, yes.
From day one.
Yes.
Because I see six twenty-three nineteen ninety-seven, and then the ordinance was amended seven twenty-four two thousand to probably change that district around. But I think Councilman Schmidt had a question as well.
I had a couple, one, going back to the question about Cedar Skyline. Today, the Cedar Skyline Board and the Main Street Board are the same board.
Correct.
They're not two separate boards.
Correct.
And you and I have been going to Main Street Board meetings for a number of years, and expanding the boundaries of Main Street has been a kind of off and on again conversation.
Yes.
For years.
Yes.
Would now be the time to have that conversation as part of this? Or should that be a completely separate conversation, you think?
Main Street would like to have those discussions about expanding the boundary. Some internal staff discussions. It was kind of decided it might be best to get this amendment through without complicating it by the discussion of a design review boundary expansion that could be a little bit more complicated, potentially a little bit more controversial. I just want to make sure that there's some wording in the ordinance that kind of conflicts with itself right now, and I want to get rid of that confliction and make sure there's no question on what the design review boundary is, what area they have authority for design review.
Gotcha. Well, in regards to that question, though, two dash two dash one, for the purpose of this chapter, are there any changes right now in that part in regards to the boundaries? Or do we add another street? Or we take it a little further out? Are there any changes in that? Because it's highlighted in blue or purple, whatever it is.
The, the.
It says.
So two dash two dash one.
Right. It identifies, for purposes of this chapter, the Central Business District is defined as all the properties lying within the area bounded by northeast Franklin, by southeast. All those words. Is that a change?
It's, it's a change in wording, but not a change in boundary.
Boundary.
So it didn't define what the boundary was in that section before. And in several other locations further down in the ordinance, it, it kept referring to the Central Business District as the S-Mid. And, and in at least one location, it refers to the currently adopted S-Mid, which there is no currently adopted S-Mid. In the other locations, it just says S-Mid. So what was deemed, what was thought to be best is if we delete out all reference to S-Mid and just put in essentially a legal description, a, you know, a general, it's bounded, it's the area bounded from here to here, here to here. And that description that we've described in two dash two dash one is identical to what the former S-Mid was.
Eric, the, the issue I would have would, if we don't deal with it now, who's to say it's not gonna get put on the back burner and we're never gonna see it again for two years? You know, as far as changing the boundaries?
Well, I don't think Main Street as an organization will let it. I mean, they, they're very interested in expanding that. I, I think it's a little premature to, you know, talk about that now because they haven't fully decided amongst themselves what they think would be the best. I've seen several different discussions, or not really proposals, because they weren't really vetted out to be a proposal, but, you know, preliminary discussions on how they might look to try and expand design review. And there's also been discussions of trying to bring back a S-Mid, which may very well be a significantly larger area that would be placed in a S-Mid. But all of those are in discussions, and I don't really know that Main Street is at a position that they're really ready to make a recommendation to the City of Waterloo to say, expand design review over this area. If, if it was gonna be expanded sooner rather than later, one thought might be to just expand it to all areas that are currently zoned C-three Central Business District. We have a zoning ordinance that has a C-three zoning district that is called the Central Business District. But its definition of Central Business District is not necessarily the same as what we're talking about in this chapter here, because we're defining the Central Business District within this chapter as essentially the former S-Mid. But the, what's area zoned C-three goes beyond that. I was pretty close to done reviewing the sections. I was in the two dash two dash three, powers and duties, and then two dash two dash four, financing, wording is added under subsection C, grants and donations, that notes the funds shall be the property of the commission and not Cedar Skyline Corporation. That's if something's donated to the commission. We want to make sure it's clear that it, it's the commission which is, you know, an arm created by the City of Waterloo.
Eric, we're, we're at five eleven already. Counsel, do we, we need some more discussion on this?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the, the only thing that I wondered about was that, you know, I see that this provides for authority for Main Street to do certain things. They have this kind of authority, and they have design review in that, and project management in that, it sounds like. And I'm wondering why other neighborhoods in the city don't have a similar thing to avoid some of the, to me, unsightly things that have gone up in some of the neighborhoods that aren't fitting the design of that neighborhood. So why can't this be extended to other neighborhoods?
And, and just, you asked that question last week, and, and we're out of time.
Yeah.
Noel, I, I, I discussed that with Noel, about having a citywide design review. And Noel, if, if as quickly as you can, or Eric, can you answer that?
No.
Uh, we, we did have that discussion, as I said we would, but please be brief.
Sure. Noel, Assistant Community Planning Development Director. I mean, the, the concerns of having a citywide design review is we have thousands of permits a year. So what are you going to include? What are you gonna not include? The amount of additional items, even if we just put them all to the planning commission instead of a design review board, would be pretty monumental. We'd have to have a, a lot of staff time to go out and review all those. So a, a lot of that is, we just don't believe that we need to have specifics of design review in every location. But we work with the Highway two eighteen Design Review Board, Main Street, for specific areas of the community for design review.
But no, no, I, I just, I, I understand what you're saying, but when certain neighborhoods, certain neighborhood organizations see the fabric and the history of their neighborhood being destroyed somewhat by different structures being built, or structures that are there being modified to the point that they don't fit with, with that neighborhood, then to me, that's troubling for those neighborhoods and the neighborhood associations that are trying to support that neighborhood. And that's why I think there needs to be at least some sectional division for this, for, for design review within the City of Waterloo, so we can, we can have those neighborhoods that can say, review this and say, no, that's not appropriate.
Right. So, so we can take a look at that larger issue. For right now, though, we need to.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to be made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
You tell me, Ms. Smith.
All the finance committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda and also the minutes of May twenty-sixth as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have some new business.
Madam Chairperson?
Thank you.
I'd be happy to take the travel, the travel request. Uh, we have just one for Mayor Clark and Michelle Wheaton, CFO, to meet with Moody's Investor Services in Chicago, Illinois, May twenty-seventh through the twenty-eighth, at an amount not to exceed eight hundred and ninety dollars. I mean, we approve that item?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That item passes. And we have pre-auths?
Pre-authorizations.
Yes, sir.
We have central garage, not to exceed eight thousand seven hundred dollars plus four hundred dollars shipping for outrigger cylinder on fire three eleven. Central garage, not to exceed six thousand three hundred dollars plus four hundred dollars shipping for lower control arm on fire three eleven. Central garage, not to exceed six thousand dollars. Replacement tires for ambulance fleet. Central garage, four thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-six cents to troubleshoot and repair EGR system for truck number nine zero two. Culture and arts, one thousand two hundred, two hundred sixty-three dollars plus fifty-eight dollars shipping for Duro Fix-It Bike Repair Station with air kit. Asia Services, one thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents for replacement of faded logos with new logos on existing exposed aggregate sign at South Hills Golf Course. Police, three thousand plus a hundred dollars shipping for replace the power inverter and controller in the police surveillance van. Sewer, three thousand three hundred five dollars plus two hundred dollars shipping for drater, injector wield, and black HDPE welding rod. Street Department, not to exceed three thousand three hundred dollars for employee uniform purchase per collective bargaining contract. Traffic operations, one thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars for one hundred no parking signs. Traffic operations, three thousand three hundred dollars for five thousand feet of Elden foil shielded number sixteen cable. Traffic operations, three thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars plus one hundred dollars shipping for forty LED eight zero two nine M five seven retrofit, retrofit lamps.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Yes, sir.
We have a couple of questions. First, culture and arts. Could you tell us, Ken, a little bit about that bike repair station?
Ken Shankle, cultural and arts director. That is part of a grant project. We received one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars from the Cedar Trails Partnership to establish or to help link the facilities at the Center for the Arts with the River Loop Trail there. So the project includes putting in this bike repair station, which will allow bikers to stop, tighten and adjust their bikes, refill their tires. It will also include signage along the trail, alerting the, the bikers there that the Center for the Arts is located there, the Phelps Youth Pavilion, the cafe, and so forth, because, because of the river wall, those things aren't very visible to those bikers. So it's to increase the awareness and accessibility. It also includes a bike rack so that those people can stop and take advantage of those cultural opportunities there.
So this money has to be used for this?
It has to be used for that project.
And is this the first one of these the city has gotten into, or we got, have we got these another? I guess that's what I was wondering.
I know there are a couple.
No, in Waterloo. Is this our first?
This is the, I believe this is the first in Waterloo. There are a couple already in the Cedar Valley.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And then, I had one other question on, for Sandy, for the hundred no parking signs. Are we, I was just thinking back a few years ago, I thought we bought some equipment that we could make our own signs. Is that, is that what this is, or are we buying these?
Oh, we are buying these. Anything that's a large purchase, it's, um, better and less expensive for us to purchase them this way than it would for us to make a hundred of them ourselves.
Gotcha.
So any large purchases, we will go out and take bids to purchase, but anything in-house and for other departments and the schools and stuff, we make.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. I move that we pay the bills this week, which are three million two hundred and three thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-two cents, three comma two zero three comma five nine two point eight two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're gonna pay the bills. I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to all of you in chambers tonight for this regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council on this Monday, June first. And welcome to those also that might be watching us on our public access television. Madam Clerk, would you start us, please, by reading the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Ms. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good, thank you. If you would all please join me in standing for just a moment of silent reflection. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be, and there are city clerk, Ms. Suzie Scher. Suzie, please.
Thanks, Jenny, reciting the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Maybe Steve.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
I can make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Uh, the first item is number six, and it's adding an exception to the purchase policy. And the second amendment is to the correction on the spelling of Three Stooges LLC. Also, with the approval of the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes from May twenty-sixth as proposed.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, there is an item that isn't on the agenda tonight that just got brought to my attention. We have a young man here tonight, Ethan Gray, that wants to address the council. Uh, and he's got a ballgame at six thirty, so I don't want to have to make him wait until the closing arguments, just in case we go long. So I'm gonna ask Ethan to come up, and Ethan, come on up. Ethan's got something important that he wants to share with everybody and with the council. Ethan, in order for people to hear you, you gotta hold this thing, and you gotta hold it right up to your mouth, okay? So can you do that and read at the same time? Okay, maybe. Can I help you? Want me to hold the mic?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's do this. Okay, let's do this.
Sure.
There we go.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Gray. Some of you may remember me when I came out and spoke to you in 2013 about VSO. Tonight, I'm coming out to personally invite all of you to the Eye Bully, Bully Breed Awareness Ex-Boat Cattle Congress Ag Building, June 20th. This is an ABKC dog show. This is the first show to Iowa. The ABKC record between Iowa and North Carolina. My little sister is Bella, and I will be showing our dogs as junior handlers. We will be having dogs from across the country coming to our community. We are still looking for local sponsors, so that our junior handlers, handlers can show for free. If anyone is interested, please let us know. It will be a great time for all, and my sister and I need all the local support, so, to bring a People's Choice Award home with us. Thank you.
Ethan, that's a great job. And what, you've got some, some handouts there, right? So, why don't you give those to Mr. Schmidt, and he can pass them around. And this is about pit bulls, is that correct, Ethan? Okay, and it's a, it's a dog show for pit bulls and at Cattle Congress?
With bull.
With bull, okay. One more time, tell me when, what's the date? Tell me when it is.
June 20th.
June 20th at Cattle Congress. So, we need to make sure that everybody knows that and shows up. Ethan, you did a great job. Thank you very much. I hope you get a great turnout. There you go, guys. Thank you. You got it.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Hart?
I can make a motion to receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B5. Also, with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $3,203,592.82.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna have Mr. Shipman speak.
Oh, we can, if you'd like, yes. You have questions for Mr. Shipman?
Well, he was gonna say a couple of words on it.
Okay. And, and, and just to clarify, Mr. Shipman is speaking regarding item number two, A2, on the request for the Irish Fest, is that correct, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Says on, all right. Thanks for having me out, City Council, Mr. Mayor, and also citizens of, residents of Waterloo. On behalf of Iowa Irish Fest, we just wanted to, you know, thank the city for your support. We're having the ninth annual Iowa Irish Fest, July 31st, this year through August 2nd. And with, I printed out with the support of the neighbors and anybody connected to parking lot wise or within the fencing of the Iowa Irish Fest, we contacted all neighbors. We just have one with no response, if that copies, have copies for everybody. But, I would like to say that we went to an Iowa, or excuse me, to an Irish Fest and Celtic Fest conference last month, where over 25 fests were represented across the country, and they were really impressed with the partnership that we have in our community and what we've done in nine short years as a nonprofit, and our budget being upwards of half a million over three days. It's not a small feat to put this on. We have 40 committee members and over 350 volunteers that put this on. And it's mainly funded through small businesses and community support grants, like the Hotel Motel Grant. We could not do it without that funding, so, thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Does anybody have any questions for Chad? Thanks, appreciate it, Chad.
Thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just had a question on a different item.
Different item, Chad.
Yeah, different item. Thanks, Chad. Under the liquor licenses, the Club Empire, I know there been an issue with that. I'm assuming that it's on here, that those issues have been resolved, but I just wanted to ask about that.
I would assume that they've been resolved also. I, I, do you have specific questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Well, I don't remember now why they, they were being recommended for...
I believe it was a cigarette issue, that they were, had sold cigarettes while they were suspended.
I thought it was an ownership issue.
No.
It's an ownership issue, yeah. I, yeah. So, I don't know if Dan could speak to it, or who could speak to it.
I think that would be Susie, wouldn't it?
Let me just pull it. It looks like they have reduced it down to a six-month license, so, and the Police Department has signed off on it. I'm assuming that they have resolved outstanding issues and...
And you know, not about if you could speak to it, please.
There were some changes in the ownership as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been changed.
Dan Tralca, Director of Safety, there were a couple individuals involved in the application. One of the individuals did not possess the ability to be involved in this type of business. He was removed from all the licensing, so it was cleared and out of proceed.
Perfect, thanks. That's right.
Thank you.
Further questions regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
On 1A9, we're not endorsing a particular design, are we, in that?
No, in order to apply for the, you're familiar with Tiger Grants, I'm sure, Tom, with your experience with the DOT, they just requested our support, that they get that. No, we're not involved with any kind of a design at all. I would assume that at some point, we're probably going to be required, or applying for some also, and we just ask for other city supports.
Okay. And, and the other question I had, and Pat, you're probably gonna say the same thing, on B3, wasn't that the people that sold cigarettes during the suspension? And then, we, we, last week or something, we had some question about, well, what's gonna happen with that?
Yes, there was the old owners, though, and that's who's being renewed. There is a new owner. I'm assuming we're talking about New Star.
Yes.
Yeah, so, this is a new owner.
Okay.
We do have to renew the prior owner's liquor license in order to transfer it then to the new owner, so that's why you'll see on A is the prior owner and B is the new owner, but the tobacco application is for a new owner.
So, new people are taking over that store.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morrison. I just wanted to let you know that I'm gonna be voting no on 1B-2A and 2B, and on 1B-3, basically for the violations that were before, but that, in walking through the neighborhood there, you know, I heard numerous statements made about that we have a proliferation and an abundance of liquor stores, and we'd like to see them out of there. I know this is a part of that, I think part of that overlay, and it's a grandfathering issue, I believe, but still, that, I believe that neighborhood deserves to have voice there. That's why I'll be voting no.
Any further comments? It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes to all except B2A, B2B, and B23, I believe.
Motion's carried. Item number two, public hearings, please. If somebody starts off, Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is a motion to receive and file the proof of public, of notice of public hearing, and that's for an ordinance vacating Willby Street, located east of 625 Glenwood Street.
Second.
All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number two?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against an ordinance vacating Willby Street? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance vacating Willby Street, located east of 625 Glenwood Street.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the request to vacate, sell, and convey a portion of Green Hill Road right away adjacent to 3561 University Avenue to 13 Associates LLC in the amount of $28,000.
Second.
All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, did we receive any written objections to item number three?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number three, vacating and selling a portion of Green Hill Road? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the hearing and also include the recommendations of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Now, Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time an ordinance approving a request by 13 Associates LLC to vacate a portion of Green Hill Road right away.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Now, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. Thank you. Counsel, item number four.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrison.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing on an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance number 5079.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, did we have any written objections on file to item number four?
Have not received any written objections.
Have not received any written objections on that. If there's anyone in the, in the audience that would like to speak either for or against, just step the microphone, please identify yourself, and, and limit your time to three minutes.
Okay. John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. After thinking about this parking issue in the front yard with the campers and the discussion with a couple of the city boys, we've got probably six or 700 duplexes, condos, miscellaneous things that have been built, all of them with the garages in the front on very narrow lots. I find it impossible to believe that some of those people aren't gonna wanna have a boat or a camper parked in the front yard for a day or two, or a motorhome, or somebody visited them. I know they shortened up, or we talked about, excuse me, just talked about parking them there for seven days, and I understand that you're probably not gonna wanna allow people to move in, stay the summer in your backyard, or whatever, but with that many new houses and the design of Waterloo and Cedar Falls as it is, with all these houses, but with everything being built in the front yard now, no access to the backyard, great expense is gonna be involved if you decide to put a slab in back now, and miscellaneous. I think this needs to be thought about a little bit harder, and due to the fact that maybe a couple people that don't like this, there's a whole lot of people in my neighborhood that do, so, thank you.
Thanks, John. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for or against?
Forrest Ilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I, too, am opposed to the hard surface parking for a number of reasons. There are a lot of small homes in my neighborhood and other older neighborhoods that have only a single garage. They have put rock beside the garage, or maybe just beside the driveway to park the second car on. Very few people have one car anymore. So, all of those people with this new ordinance are gonna be required to dig that out if it's less than six inches and replace it with five inches of concrete, six inches of rock, or six inches of rock with asphalt overlay. We have miles and miles of roads in this city that don't have anything but seal coat on them. And we have, all of our alleys are nothing but dirt. So, these ones that have in the backyard a garage, an extra parking stall, are gonna be required to put down hard surface. And right, to get to it, driving a city block to get to it, is nothing but dirt. I think it's overkill. I think the cement slabs that they park on are adequate. If I've got a renter that wants to bring in his 8x30 motorhome or travel trailer and park it there, I would be comfortable with putting in the cement pieces for them to park it on. But when they move, I sure wanna take them out and turn it back to grass and nice yard or garden plot. I think it's overkill, and those three things I mentioned. Just drive around town and look at all of the alleys that have an extra beside the garage. And to force those folks, we don't need to drive any more people from Waterloo, we need everybody we got, young, old, rich and poor. Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest.
Just pull it down. It'll, it'll bend. There you go.
Karen Atwood, 902 West 8th in Waterloo. We brought our, we bought our property just about 50 years ago in Waterloo, because that's where we wanted to be. Subsequently, we bought three other properties. Our properties are from 1899 to 1923. Recently, we paid $1,000, because your city rules state you can't have tanks in the basement. This particular thing is bad, because you're telling people in the city who've invested years ago, guess what? We're changing the rules on you. Now, if you have to pay, that's your problem. It's not friendly, it's not nice. We gotta be good to our people.
Thanks, Karen. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the ordinance change?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrison.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and recommendation of approval of Planning and Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Very good, Counsel. Do you have comments, questions, at this point?
Mr. Mayor, I just...
Mr. Morrison.
Mr. Mayor, I just, one thing I'd just like to say is I'd like to thank Councilman Welper for his work over the last year in, on these different ordinances.
Okay. Are there further comments? Mr. Schmidt?
Could we have, I don't know if it'd be Eric or who it would be, but could we have somebody maybe just to give us a little review of why it is we're doing, what it is we're doing? I mean, what ultimately are we trying to accomplish?
Eric Schrader, City Planner. So, first off, I would note that it sounds like most of the comments made here tonight were, would pertain to regulations of the Chapter Five Parking Ordinance, which is coming up on the agenda later, and not the zoning ordinance provisions. The zoning ordinance provisions has multiple changes, one of which does get into hard surfacing requirements, but it is for new construction of a single-family home or a two-family home or moving a single-family home or a two-family home onto a lot. Moving forward, they will be required to have a hard-surfaced driveway in the front yard. That does not affect existing gravel driveways in the front yard and it does not affect existing or future gravel parking areas in the rear yard. We're not talking about the Chapter Five ordinance yet, but since they kind of relate and there was some discussion on that, I'll bring that up. In that ordinance, there is some changes to the front yard parking requirements. Again, no changes to the rear side yard. If you have an existing gravel parking area in a rear side yard, you can keep it. What that section will require, if you have an existing gravel driveway in the front yard, the driveway itself, it can remain. If you have a gravel driveway extension, that will require to be brought into compliance.
Eric, let's, I know you're well-intended, but let's don't, we already are a little confused on what we're voting on and what's being proposed right now. The ordinance regarding what the folks were talking about is coming up actually in the ordinances section. It's item number eighteen on our agenda tonight. So, does the ordinance that has been introduced, changing the Waterloo zoning ordinance number 509, have any effect on what the folks were talking about tonight?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes, sir.
If I could, Eric, but going back to this particular item, aren't a few of the reasons that we are proposing to do this, and I won't say in any order of importance, but having to do with EPA groundwater contamination by vehicles being parked on the grass, leaking liquids that then seep into the ground? So, that's one of the reasons.
Correct. It certainly could be one. I don't know that that one has had a lot of discussion. We talked about the stormwater runoff that washouts from gravel driveways that can occur. And again, this, the zoning ordinance change only affects new front yard, I mean, new construction. So, if you've got an existing house, you could put it in a gravel drive, but if you're building a new house or moving a house into an existing lot, you'll have to put in a paved driveway in the front yard. And there was some discussion regarding like NPDES issues and washouts, sediment control, but also aesthetics of a neighborhood.
And that's what I was going to ask you, isn't also part of what we're proposing to do here to, I don't know how to tactfully put this, but to clean up the appearance of neighborhoods so we don't have a lot of vehicles sitting around. And obviously, these folks are not the culprits, but we do have some that have a few too many vehicles and maybe they're not licensed and maybe they're not, you know, they're not used and they don't add to the neighborhood. So, let me ask you this. What about, you know, I got a call this weekend from a friend of mine that said, you know, the front of my house, I like the way the front of my house works, but that's not where it looks. That's not where I spend my time. I spend my time in my backyard. And he said, what about people that, you know, have just all kinds of whatever in their backyard? This has nothing to do with that.
It does not.
And he said, you know, are we going to look at or have we talked about maybe helping people clean up their backyard too? Because that's where a lot more people spend their time. Is that on your radar or not necessarily?
It hasn't really been discussed, so it certainly could be something to look at.
Okay.
All right. Counsel? I just, before you leave, Eric, for the good folks that came up, and I understand their concern, I want to make certain, and counsel also, that the item that we're discussing right now is a zoning change and would affect new construction of new housing, not existing situations. We will discuss those in item number eighteen, but right now, that is not what we're talking about.
Correct.
We're talking about new, new construction.
Correct.
Okay.
The amendment does lots of other changes.
But as it relates to parking?
Yes.
It's not?
Correct.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Mayor. The, this, has this been vetted by our landlords association or realtors in this conversation for this particular ordinance with the?
I'm not aware that it's been directly vetted with them. I mean, we've been working on it for well over a year now. It has gone before the Planning and Zoning Commission and got a unanimous recommendation of approval. It went through two meetings of ordinance committee of the city council, so, I mean, it certainly isn't, it's got some news coverage as well, so I certainly don't think it's anything that's being sprung on anyone.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Eric, is this the one that was also regulating the amount of vehicles?
No, that's the Chapter Five Parking.
Number eighteen.
Number eighteen.
Mr. Schmidt?
Eric, going back to Councilman Hart's question though, so have we talked to like the contractors groups or the home builders groups, that type of thing that, and again, just to get their input or to get their thoughts on, on some of the changes here?
We have had some conversations with some of the developers, like, for example, Habitat for Humanity. We specifically talked to them for the two changes dealing with the required hard-surface driveway and the requirement to build some minimum-sized garage, and they were, they were on board and supportive of the amendment.
Thank you. Further? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll just close. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance number 5079 to update multiple sections on file in city clerk's office, including changes for hard-surface driveway and parking requirements, minimum garage requirements, freestanding commercial parking lots, driveway and parking requirements for multifamily dwellings and other miscellaneous updates.
Second. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion fails. We will take this up for a second reading next week. Item number, we're going in the resolutions. Let's take the first three, please, five, six and seven. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Schmidt was first, please.
Item number five is adopting a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Failure Hurley Construction of Waterloo, Iowa, at a total cost of ninety-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-eleven dollars in conjunction with the 2014 Burns Tennis Center restroom project. Item number six is adopting a resolution authorizing exception to the City of Waterloo purchasing procedures to approve the purchase of one 2012 DOT stat TM-720 trommel screen from Airing Equipment Company Butler, Wisconsin, to support operations at the city yard waste site in the amount of two-hundred-and-fourteen, five-hundred-thousand dollars without taking a bids. And item number seven is adopting a resolution approving organized crime drug enforcement task force grant money as a sub-recipient from the United States Justice Department in the amount of three-thousand dollars with no matching funds required to be directly applied to overtime related to the organized crime drug enforcement case WC-IAN-0114.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding any of those?
Could we just have a little overview of item number six, what that is and what it's going to do for us?
Mark Rice, Public Works Director. This is, this is the, I guess for lack of a better term, the end result of, of our yard waste site and being able to actually turn compost. You know, we've got the huge pile and we grind that, then we lay it out, we turn it, and then it needs to go through this screen to complete the process and get, get the finished product back to the public to use. So, right now, we've got multiple acres, I would say, of material behind the big pile that everybody sees when they take their leaves down there that needs to be screened. So, that's what this piece of equipment will do.
So, 2012, does that mean it's a three or four-year-old piece of equipment?
It is. And what was attractive by this is it's about sixty percent the cost of a new machine and it's, it's owned by an equipment company. It's never been, what I would say privately held, so they rented out and then the machine has been coming back in for service regularly. So, that was very attractive. Okay, thank you.
Are there further questions from counsel? We have someone from the audience that would like to speak, and although it's not a hearing, we'll allow comments for resolutions. Yes, sir. Please give us your name and address.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I was down there three times today and I've been down there several times in the last week, and I see that the grinder is not even moving, not even operating. So, is the backyard full? That's why we need this piece of equipment? Or, because I saw the guy down there today shoving a pile bigger and bigger and bigger, and I've seen this for all spring. Doesn't make any sense.
Go ahead and answer him. What doesn't make sense?
Mark Rice, Public Works Director. Again, it takes manpower, bottom line. We've had some personnel issues with, related to health. It's more important that people get their curbside recycling and yardways picked up. It's, right now, our priority is a backlog of code enforcement cleanups, and it's those people, that handful of people that have to do all of this work. So, right now, there's still room for you to bring your material to the site. We have every intention of starting on that, but right now, we're trying to get other things that we've determined are higher priority done. And yes, that, once we get that screen in and we can screen some of that material, that will give us a lot more space to work with down there.
Okay, so what you're saying basically is the backyard is full?
Yeah, I would say that's probably pretty accurate, the backyard's full.
Okay. I just keep watching it and not seeing any progress.
Unfortunately, so do I.
Yeah.
And it's just not disappearing. It just keeps adding, so.
You keep piling up.
I understand. But in, also in answer to your question, the grinder is operational. I had a mechanic down there this morning to verify that it's ready to go, so I have every intention of getting people on it.
It's not running?
No, it's not. It takes a person to do that, so.
Okay. Further comments? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please, on five, six and seven.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion's carry. Eight, nine, ten, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move to adopt a resolution approving notice of intent for NPDES coverage under general permit to the Iowa DNR for FY 2016 Shawless Road recreational trail extension, contract number 858, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Nine is a resolution approving award of contract to B&amp;B Builders in Supply of Waterloo in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the FY 2015 sidewalk repair program, Zone Five, and trail repairs, contract number 878, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Ten is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments in an amount not to exceed two-thousand dollars for the writing, preparation and submittal for extension of Highway 63 recreational trail application for state recreational trail funds, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding eight, nine or ten? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Those motions carry. Let's do ordinances, please, item number eighteen. And ladies and gentlemen, this is the, the item that will affect your parking. So, item number eighteen, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item eighteen is a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance by enacting a new Chapter Five Parking and Residential Area of Title Six Motor Vehicles and Traffic.
Second. Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You don't mark them up for me anymore and I get confused.
No.
Before we do that, counsel, are there questions or comments from counsel?
Could we have Mr., well, yeah.
Yeah. We can certainly do this again.
Schrader, give us a little overview on this one, yeah.
Forrest Ilavu again. Sorry I spoke on the wrong.
That's okay, we were all confused.
Okay. I am confused sometimes. Just a couple more things to add to what I said before. You know, you talk about environmental, they, they want us to put in hard surface because of the rock washing into the street and so on, like I said before. These, most of these are dirt alleys and lots of unimproved streets. I have a lot off of University Avenue. When it rains on University, it runs down that alley and actually worsens big holes in it. And Mark Rice's folks came the other day and they bladed the dirt and did a wonderful job of filling it again with dirt. The first rain, it'll all go right into our storms and right into our rivers and so on. So, until we can take care of the cities portion, let's, let's hold off on the citizens. Thank you for your time.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I heard Eric say something about washouts and Forrest has said that too, but I drive down different streets and I see a lot of people mowing grass into the street. Isn't that a contaminant? We don't seem to enforce that, so why are we worried about this now? It, it all seems to, should come together. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Are there further comments? Very good, we have had discussion, counsel, are there further couns, comments from counsel? Yes, sir.
Could we have Mr. Schrader give us a little overview of this, what this one actually is?
Sure. Eric Schrader, City Planner. So, first off, this is a proposed new chapter in the Code of Ordinances, but it's not a new set of regulations. These regulations currently exist as
for up to $39,500 and authorize mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute any necessary documents.
Second. Very good, thank you, Mr. Hart. There were, that's a mouthful, there were several items there. Questions or comments regarding any of them? Mr. Schmidt?
Could we just have Mr. Anderson give us a little overview on number 14? And is that the typical development agreement?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, that is, basically, the calculations were set up to pay them back for the land cost. So it, rebate amount based on 2.7 of new value. The 4,100 in the taxable value is the existing lot value out there now, so we're seeing a large increase in that. But again, the rebate amounts are set up to pay them back for the land, so essentially they're getting free land for the project.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn?
Mr. Anderson, was the land market value, do you think, did you analyze to make sure that was?
We believe so, yes. I believe it was set at close to $500,000. We compared that with other land sales in that area, and it was very comparable.
Ms. Cole?
Mr. Anderson, on number 16, I might be asking this a little bit out of school, all offense intended, but do we, is there a project that has anyone stepped up and said, "We want that land"?
Tomorrow night at the, four o'clock at the Planning and Zoning Commission, Habitat for Humanity is proposing to plat that into 14 lots. They do have some designs of homes they would be proposing on that. As you may recall, as this moves ahead, there would be several council actions as it is a planned residence site, so there would be a site plan amendment, there would be a plating process. Habitat has held at least two neighborhood meetings out there to gauge the support of the neighborhood and to find out any concerns they have. We'll find out a lot of those tomorrow night at four o'clock.
Thank you.
Further questions? Roll call vote on all, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Those motions carry. Let's do ordinances, please, item number 18. And ladies and gentlemen, this is the item that will affect your parking. So item number 18, please. Mr. Schmidt?
Item 18 is a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time in an ordinance by enacting a new Chapter Five Parking and Residential Area of Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic.
Second. Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, same side. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You don't mark them up for me anymore, and I get confused. Before we do that, counsel, are there questions or comments from counsel?
Could we have Mr., well, yeah.
Yeah, we can certainly do this again.
Schrader, give us a little overview on this one, yeah.
Forrest Delvo again. Sorry I spoke on the wrong-
That's okay, we were all confused.
Okay. I am confused sometimes. Just a couple more things to add to what I said before. You know, you talk about environmental, they want us to put in hard surface because of the rock washing into the street and so on, like I said before. These, most of these are dirt alleys and lots of unimproved streets. I have a lot off of University Avenue. When it rains on University, it runs down that alley and actually washes big holes in it. And Mark Rice's folks came the other day, and they bladed the dirt and did a wonderful job of filling it again with dirt. The first rain, it'll all go right into our storms and right into our rivers and so on. So until we can take care of the cities portion, let's hold off on the citizens. Thank you for your time.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Fore Street, I heard Eric say something about washouts, and Forrest has said that too. But I drive down different streets, and I see a lot of people mowing grass into the street. Isn't that a contaminant? We don't seem to enforce that, so why are we worried about this now? It all seems to, should come together. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Are there further comments? Very good. We have had discussion, counsel. Are there further couns-, comments from counsel? Yes, sir.
Could we have Mr. Schrader give us a little overview of this, what this one actually is?
Sure. Eric Schrader, city planner. So first off, this is a proposed new chapter in the Code of Ordinances, but it's not a new set of regulations. These regulations currently exist as essentially an add-on or an addendum to the currently adopted International Property Maintenance Code. So as part of our review and overhaul of the International Property Maintenance Code, the city attorney's office thought that it would be best to take this large section, like eight pages of regulations predominantly dealing with residential parking, and move them out of the International Property Maintenance Code into a standalone new chapter, Chapter Five, under Title VI, for a new chapter on parking in residential areas. And at the same time, we're proposing to overhaul the regulation. So just kind of that to start off with. These are existing regulations that we're amending and moving from a different location to the current location. So we're overhauling how a driveway is defined, we're adding a new definition of a driveway extension. We are redefining vehicle, so it lines up with how we define vehicle elsewhere in the code. We are tweaking the definitions of yard, front yard, rear yard, side yard, to make those consistent. And then some of the other changes in here are actually being less restrictive. So the current number of vehicles that you are allowed to have on your property, the overall number that is going to be allowed is being increased, both for recreational vehicles and then also a exception that can, would allow you to have more regular vehicles based on the number of individuals residing on the property with a driver's license. So in many respects, we are being less restrictive than what the ordinance currently is. But we are also addressing the hard-surfacing requirements. It does not affect anything in the rear or side yard. It does not affect the driveway in the front yard if you have an existing gravel driveway. And the ordinance delineates the difference between the driveway, which is basically, if you've got a 20-foot wide garage, that 20-foot is your driveway. If you've got, you know, anything that goes beyond that, that's a driveway extension. We're not requiring the driveway to be upgraded, but the ordinance does propose that driveway extensions would have to be brought into compliance with the hard-surfacing requirements. There was some discussion on that timeframe. It was originally proposed to be in there by December 31st of 2016. As you can see in the updated one that I have provided you, a memo that was pushed back to December 31st, 2017. It gives more time for compliance, and as we also discussed in the ordinance committee, an option from having to hard-surface that would be removal. You don't have to hard-surface the driveway. So you would, if you have a driveway extension that's gravel that doesn't comply, you would have the option of paving it or removing it. I think those kind of covers the main areas. I can certainly ask, answer questions on any of the other areas as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn?
Eric, so currently, you can't park on the side or the rear yard without concrete, asphalt, or gravel?
Correct. The current ordinance always, already requires to park a vehicle anywhere that it has to be on concrete, asphalt, or gravel.
May I have a few seconds?
Yeah, Forrest is on his way up to enforce. You've already spoken once, so you know I'm not, not supposed to let you cut people. Go ahead.
No, no worries, man.
Jerry, go ahead. Give us your name and address.
Jerry Shatzler, 1829 West 7th. Many years ago, I was employed at a company, and we were on rough times, really rough times. We thought we might even have to close up one plant. The first director, thank God, we had a strong leader, says, "Hey, guys, quit inventing the wheel. Everybody just go to your desk, do nothing, and let's work on the big problem." I always, I'm watching these, and these are good people, not selling them short. But it looks to me we're always trying to reinvent something, and that's not healthy. It solves nothing. Let's look at the big picture. Let's look at why in the heck we got people parking in handicap zones that shouldn't be parking there. I could, I could get you five a day. Let's look at people with total, no respect for the speed limit. We have some gender angry people out there, and that's the big picture. How are you gonna do the best for this town with the least amount of money involved? If these kids wanna sit around and reinvent things, that's fine, but, you know, let's not waste our time. We got bigger problems in town than this. Is it a gravel? Is it a heart? That won't fly.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yeah, I'd like to see you be a little bit stronger when you finish it.
Thank you. Mr. Welper, I think Mr. Shatzler just called you a kid, by the way.
Thank you for that.
I just want to make a correction for you folks.
Yes, sir.
When head of code enforcement was here, they said anything parked in the side yard or the rear yard. Yes, today it does have to be parked on concrete or rock, but only the wheels. The new ordinance is gonna require the whole thing. So like I mentioned before, if I let that 30-foot motorhome come to my rental house, I'm gonna have to put in 30-foot by eight-foot of rock. So it is a big change, a horrible change, and if you've already got that, you know. And she mentioned weeds was the problem. We have an ordinance for weeds. We can go out with a weed eater and cut those weeds, we can sight them, find them, whatever, if it's on those pavers. I would like to be able, when that motorhome leaves, put it back to grass or garden.
Thanks, Forrest.
Thank you.
I would like to know who's on the committee changing these regulations? Because if it is just city members, you'd be much better off.
I'm sorry, you still gotta tell, tell us who you are.
Karen Atwood, Waterloo, Iowa.
Thank you.
Nine of two states, yeah, that's it. I would like to know who's on the committee. Now, if it is just city people, you really need to take groups like the landlords, citizens of Waterloo, the International Property Code maintenance people into it to make sure it's inclusive before it ever comes to the city council for approval. I know they have meetings and lots of them, but that's just a suggestion. We'd be much better off. We don't need hassles.
Thanks, Karen.
John Sherbin, 1715 Ruben Road, I would like to expand on what the lady said somewhat. We seem to have a problem, at least I can see that, and I always hear this. I'm not picking on anybody, but it's always, well, we've got a few people that call us that don't like that. Or we have several people, and we never know how many several is. Is it one, 10? How many people actually were for this, and how many are against? And that's what you guys gotta look at as a council, because you guys, you got a reelections and stuff coming up too. Now, I can't tell you anybody in my neighborhood is for this. And I have a large, fairly large neighborhood, same as Forrest and a few other people. So what are we gaining by doing this?
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right, so roll call vote.
Just real quickly, I did receive an email today at 9:11 a.m. from Dave and Kathy. They didn't leave a name, but they were in opposition to this, so I wanted to add that to the file.
As did I, and their last name is Hoth, H-O-T-H.
Okay.
I think you did get that.
I did.
Yeah. It's on file, you bet. So we do have one written objection on file. Even though there's no hearing, we'll still make it on the record. Are there further council questions? It's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Board three. Who read it? I've forgotten. I've lost Steve. I think you did.
I did, I'm sorry. It's been a while. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Very good. The motion fails. We will take this up again next week, ladies and gentlemen, for the second reading. Item number 19, please. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Welper?
Number 19 is a motion to receive and file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances by repealing Article B, International Property Maintenance Code of Chapter One, Building Code of Title IX, Building Regulations, and enacting in lieu of, thereof, a new Article B, International Property Maintenance Code of Chapter One of the Building Code of Title IX, Building Regulations. This is for the amendment to the Code of Ordinances by replacing the International Property Maintenance Code.
Second.
Very good. There is a motion, a second. Sorry, counsel, questions or comments regarding item number 19?
Could we have another little presentation?
Eric, would you like to tell us what this is, please?
Eric Schrader, city planner. So the first thing that this will do is replace the International Property Maintenance Code as currently adopted under the 2009 edition and replace it with the current version, which is the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. And then, again, the last time that the International Property Maintenance Code was adopted, there were several add-on regulations, the biggest of which was the parking stuff that I talked about earlier that's been passed for the first time now, moving that into a standalone Chapter Five, while also as part of this one, then we're deleting it out of this chapter. So it removes all of that stuff, and then most of the rest of it is just kind of cleanup stuff, updating some of the language that complies with the building code. You know, like for example, Section 304.14 that regulates insect screens is being deleted because we already have a section of code that covers that. So we don't want duplication, and more importantly, we don't want conflicting ordinances. So most of, the biggest change, I would say, out of this is removing all of the parking regulations out of this section of the code and then adopting the most current version of the code. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Eric. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt the ordinance.
Sure. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Item 20, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole?
I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending multiple sections of Chapter Four Litter Control of Title IV Public Health and Safety, including regulations for litter in vehicles and regulations for junk motor vehicles.
Second. Counsel? Eric, would you tell us what this one is, please?
Eric Schrader, city planner. So in our overhaul of the International Property Maintenance Code, we determined that some updating to the Chapter Four Litter Control is also in order. Just kind of briefly, there's a Section 4-4-4, which is being amended to address junk litter in vehicles if it rises to the level that would constitute a public health nuisance. Then most of the changes under this are under 4-4-7, which is the junk motor vehicle section. We're adding a definition of actively restored and creating an exception for a vehicle that is being actively restored if it's either a special interest vehicle or an antique vehicle from meeting the definition of a junk vehicle if it's behind a fenced area. Otherwise, they normally would have to be completely within an enclosed building. But this creates an exception for actively restored vehicle. Updates the code enforcement office from the building official or neighborhood services coordinator to the superintendent of waste management, as that's who currently oversees code enforcement division. Adds a definition of special interest vehicle. It updates wording on notice of violation, including a provision allowing notice by first-class mail and posting of the notice on the property under certain situations where notice by publication is allowed. An exception is provided for the actively repaired vehicles I already mentioned. Enforcement officer is switched from the health officer to code enforcement officer. Again, I think that was just a mistake that got missed because the health department hasn't been in charge of code enforcement for quite some time, and then updating the notice of violation section in 4-4-13.
Eric, questions? So if the, this is for businesses, not so much for residents, right? It's for residents also?
Yeah, it would, this would pertain to junk vehicles anywhere in the city limits.
Okay.
Further?
Eric? So back up with me a minute here. So today, if somebody has a vehicle that they're restoring, today that has to be in a garage.
Correct.
And with this change-
Assuming it's not licensed and operable, but if you're restoring it, it's probably not operable.
Right. And with this change, you no longer have to have that in a garage. You can have it sitting out in the open.
In a, behind a fenced area. The wording talks about obscured from adjoining property or public property. So it's gotta be, I think it's gotta, and the wording says at least a six-foot fence.
Wait, I guess I don't understand the purpose of that, because if somebody had a restorable vehicle, I can't imagine they'd leave it sitting out in the elements. I mean, I just don't follow the train of thought.
I think in some instances, the special interest, it kind of covers two, special interest vehicles and antique vehicles. The special interest is kind of more geared to cover like a stock car that you might be restoring. I think oftentimes, they may store it in a garage when they can and sometimes will have it out of the garage when they're working on it.
Okay, thanks.
Further? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you. All, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for all presentations. That's the end of our regularly scheduled business. Cover the microphone and give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Am I ready?
Yes, sir.
Gerald Shatzler, 1829 West 7th. Number one, I was very serious about the people parking in these handicap places. In fact, today, if I didn't think I was gonna get hit, a person got out of the car ahead of me in a handicap zone. I was behind him in another handicap zone, and I said to my wife, I said, "My God, they're almost running." I said, "I'd like to see the people that are handicapped in that family." And they turned around, and they said, "What'd you say?" And I says, "I said, 'I'm handicapped too.'" That's the true story this morning. Anyway, you see it all over Waterloo. Also, we had a friend come in from Devonport, and she says, "I cannot believe how the drivers drive in this town." She says, "They got gender anger, they got all kinds of things going on." I said, "I don't know what they got going on, but they got it going on." And the next thing I'd like to address is, Mr. Anderson, you said that that place out on Airline Highway was 130% above the average wage? 120. Now, is that above public employee wage?
Noel, you're gonna have to go to the microphone, please, if you're gonna answer. And Jerry, I'd ask you, please, to speak into the microphone too. When you don't, then people-
I don't trust it.
Okay, then nobody can hear you.
Paranoia. Okay, go ahead.
That was the overall county wage.
Pardon?
That was the overall county wage. That's what we have the statistics on.
You mean overall county wage?
The state compiled statistics on- The state compiled statistics on overall county wages for each county in Iowa.
Does that include public and private together?
I believe it does, yes.
That's never been separated out?
I do not believe so.
That's convenient, isn't it? Because when I heard that, I thought, that is the whole truth. I think you'll find out if that was broken out, the public employee still is way ahead of the private sector in Blackhawk County. Okay, the next thing.
Thanks, Noel.
I would like to do, or ask. VGM has some very talented people. I've been doing a lot of research on it. And with your connections to Mr. Welch, who left Waterloo in a pretty good position, and our vice president of VGM, who works here, if they could work up something where somehow Waterloo could legally get into private enterprise, which would not affect private business, and generate money for Waterloo. I don't think that's a sin, I think that's a good idea anymore. That way, you wouldn't have people like me standing up here. Everybody lives in Fat City then. And you do have the talent there, Carolyn, absolutely. And you have the talent also for that. So I'd like to see, maybe you put a little push on that. Like, we keep having these things, you know, with these tickets. And a long time ago, I remember somebody said, well, why don't we charge a certain percent for those tickets? Like on Irish Day or whatever it is. Well, it got blown away. We have passed up so many opportunities in this town, we could have raised, generated, or generated money.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yeah, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now, just don't talk about it, do something about it.
Thank you.
You're a wily guy there, Mr. Mayor.
My wily is running out of wyliness.
John Sherbin, seventeen fifteen Robin Road. Just to fill out a little bit more information, I have a couple pretty good friends that work at Conneagra in the pudding plant. They were stolen from the autumn repair business, which I was part of for many years. And their problem is that they get paid some reasonably decent money, but they work long shifts. They work like twelve-hour days, ten, twelve-hour days. They're four on, three off, and that's not the same three. They get no weekends, or two weekends a month and whatever. And there's a lot of businesses that are working that way in Waterloo. Tyson's and several of the other ones have not a straight work week. It's not eight hours a day or ten hours a day. It's twelve hours a day, and sometimes it's four or five days a week. And that makes the wages look pretty good until you, you know, get back into our area here where we don't work that kind of hour, so just a point of information. But it's like I said, I sometimes wonder, you know, we've got two major problems in this town. One of them being education, and I don't know how you can fix that. And the other one's taxes, and I don't know how you can fix that either. But we're not, we're not working on them now, so we'll let them go until December or sometime in there. Maybe we'll start thinking about it again, so thank you.
Thanks, John.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I'm hearing rumors on the street that we're transferring money from different accounts to both to TIF areas, even from one TIF to another. And I don't know that that's true. I'm just making you aware of the rumors that we're hearing on the street. I understand that that is not a legal process, so maybe someone should, somewhere along the line, take a look into that.
Thanks, David. No.
Good evening.
Yes.
Christopher Schiff, twenty-two oh five Randolph Street. Still a little greenhouse, you still can't miss it. The Liberty Park Neighborhood Association will be meeting tomorrow evening at six thirty p.m. Unity Presbyterian Church, eleven forty-nine Hammond, corner of Hammond and Mitchell.
Good job, Chris. Thank you very much for what you're doing there.
Mr. Mayor, motion to receive and file oral comments and adjourn.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.